Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, it's right. She's gonna be here. Yeah, it's okay. Won't she just? Oh, did she?
Yeah. Yeah.
You called again?
Yeah. Hang in there.
Okay.
Okay, so, well, Mr. Peter?
Hi.
I know you. Who are you?
All right. All right, everybody, welcome to tonight's. There we are. Welcome to tonight's study session for today, Monday, August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. For the record, all members of council are here with the exception of councillor Hart, who I know I talked to earlier today, and I know she's planning on being here, so she may be here in a few minutes. All right, we've got two items on our study session agenda. So, and then just for the note for the public, we've got a different item on our active agenda called the Water System Plan Presentation for us to talk about that during the study session and during the regular meeting. If you guys tried to download the article, it's something like seven hundred pages long, and I know my computer timed out on it. And hopefully you guys were able to open it, but it took an incredible amount of time to to download. So we will deal with that only in the regular meeting. On the study session tonight, we have, the first item will be a presentation from the Catholic Charities Housing Services EPA Grant Proposal. It said to receive a presentation regarding the Outlook Road Project and the EPA Grant Proposal. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Catholic Charities is here. Oh, there we go. And I thought I knew I saw them in the lobby. I just wanted to make sure. So this is a conversation I had with Catholic Charities last week to talk about a new development in the Outlook area. So and this discussion will involve grant funding that the city will need to be supportive of to kind of plug some funding gaps. So with that being said, I'll bring up Catholic Charities to talk about this project and and the footprint that they want to build.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you, council members. I'm Brian Ketchum. I'm Vice President and Director of Catholic Charities Housing Services. And I'm here with Sergio Garcia. He's one of our housing developers. So just wanted to provide just a quick overview of the agency and then have an opportunity to share a little bit about the vision for for this overall development, which is just in between Outlook Road and Wooden Road here. Really, if you have a good arm, it's a stone's throw away, but not too far. And it's a total of the the total proposals for fifty-seven acres of redevelopment, and we'll touch base on that as we we get into it. But just by way of introduction, Catholic Charities Housing Services has been around since nineteen ninety-eight. And we develop, own and manage affordable multifamily rental housing. And we have resident services programs at each one of our housing developments where we connect residents to service providers and other opportunities in the community. So providing those that access to opportunities with with the surrounding community. Really being able to address the comprehensive needs for families that we serve. In addition to that, we're a HUD certified housing counselling agency. So we provide bilingual repurchase counselling predominantly for families that are interested in becoming homebuyers. And so we help walk them through the process. We'll help them establish or repair their credit. We provide some basic budgeting classes to help them begin saving for down payment and and then seeing what mortgage products are right for them. And if they choose, they can enter into our homeownership program where we have two different homeownership models that we offer families to choose from. And they're both sweat equity based models, so families are working on their own own homes. Fairly similar to like a Habitat for Humanity model that most people are familiar with. The difference between the two models is just that one has a higher sweat equity component where our mutual self-help program is where families work and they do thirty hours a week of sweat equity on their homes. So it's a very heavy sweat equity commitment that takes about a year to build those homes in a group. And our individual self-help is more for families that aren't able to make that commitment. And it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-hour sweat equity component. And in exchange for that, we provide them with a credit at closing. So if down payment, if having a down payment was a barrier to getting into homeownership, we can get them into a home with no money down. But basically, the home's fully leveraged. So so those are our core programs. You know, overall, we have thirty different multifamily properties in central Washington. And you can see some some of the pictures of those properties up now. So just over eleven hundred units. And we're, you know, continuing to build. We have some development that we're working on right now in the city of Yakima. And then we're also working on a rehabilitation of an existing site, three existing sites actually in Grant County. So and then here in Sunnyside, we're working with our homeownership program right now on a sixty-home subdivision off of Allen Road. And we're just wrapping up the infrastructure on that. And and in fact, just last Friday, the first ten families were able to move into their homes. So we're really excited. We've got another ten homes that are actively in construction, and we're about to start construction on another ten. And so so we really utilize our programs and services to try and provide a continuum of affordable housing options for for low-income families. And so so it's a broad array. We have some that serve permanent supportive housing. We have about seventy percent of our portfolio that serves farm workers and their families in the valley. And then we have some units that are dedicated to disabled individuals, providing affordable housing. So on our single-family development, we've built so almost two-hundred-and-fifty homes just in Yakima and Benton Counties over the last twenty years. And so it's really but it's really neat to see those families just grow and succeed, getting into their home, beginning to build assets for them and their families. And then, you know, looking to refinance their homes just like anybody else in terms of going back to school or starting a new job or starting a new business. And so it's been fun to walk that journey with those families and and share in their success ultimately. What you see up above, the Resident Services Program, this is just a sampling of kind of the wide variety of services that we coordinate at our housing sites. Around can five main areas of focus, including crime prevention, education, health and nutrition, community engagement, and then economic opportunities. The economic opportunities is really kind of a segue into our homeownership program. And it goes again with our housing counselling and and then helping families build assets. Most of our time is spent in the education area focus where we're working with school-aged kids, connecting them at various touchpoints throughout their their academic careers. So we have a partnership with the YMCA to be able to send kids to the YMCA Camp Dudley during the summer, which is often for kids their first time outside of the valley. And that first experience with nature where they're really recreating and just appreciating the value of nature in its own right. And that's kind of a stepping stone then as we build those relationships with their parents and with the students. So that from that kind of middle school age, as we begin talking about, you know, college opportunities or trade school opportunities, we have a connection with them. And 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 they've had an experience trusting us on a new experience that was fun and different. And so we'll connect with them to do college campus tours, whether that's here at YVC or Perry Tech or Washington State University Eastern Heritage. Usually do about three tours a year, and we just kind of vary the different college campuses that we go to. And it's been a great way for being able to place students then into post-secondary education. And that's one of the hallmarks that for our program is we've been measuring the graduation rates of high school seniors at our housing sites for for ten years now. And and we're for for serving a low-income community. We consistently were at about eighty-five percent high school graduation rate. So it's higher than the graduation rates within the school districts that our students are coming from. And of those who graduated, again, it's about eighty percent have gone on to some sort of post-secondary education. Again, that can look at a wide variety, whether that's trade school, two-year university or four-year. So that's something that we're really proud of and part of our approach to community development. And so what we're working on and proposing to Segway tonight for for our most recent effort is is a total of fifty-seven acres. You could see outlined there between Outlook and Wooden Road that we're looking to continue developing and providing both multifamily rental housing opportunities as well as homeownership for first-time homebuyers. And so we're we're looking to develop this. This will likely be, you know, more than a decade before it's fully built out as it just development takes that long and it'll encompass in multiple phases. But when we're done, we're still modeling the density and the split between how many multifamily and single family. Somewhere between five hundred and six hundred homes, we split probably sixty, forty multifamily rental housing versus homeownership. It's kind of what we're currently looking at. So about two hundred single-family homes, one hundred and fifty to two hundred, and then I think we're targeting three hundred multifamily rental units. And what we're looking to do is to partner with the city on a grand opportunity that came up. And I don't, so do you want to provide a little bit more on the the site plan work and the search process? And then I can go back to EPA?
Yeah, sure. Just going back a slide or two. Just to speak on the site development, we want to really emphasize on the fact that this is a community-driven project. It's based off of what we've received of a demand from the community. And we intend to have this development designed as much as we can by the community. So back in March, we had a three-day workshop event where we invited several eaters within the community. And we had an open house in the afternoon for two of the three days where we had neighbors and anyone within the public who was interested in providing their feedback come in and and provide aspects of of a development that they would want to see reflected within this project. Aspects that weren't up for discussion were the split in between the single family and multifamily. That's just based off of the necessities of the community, and it's founded off of data that we get at the state level. So that that's the logic behind the multifamily and the single family. And oftentimes, multifamily infrastructure helps offset the cost for the single family. Any of the objectives that were shared throughout that three-week workshop included having integration in the common heating space in between the multifamily and the single family while also feeling a sense of community within your neighbors. And this I plan is not necessarily close to final, but it it did integrate part of those objectives. We try to make the multifamily be as park-like as and as inviting as possible while the single family provided for a bit larger than our get lots while it also allowed them to have privacy from the multifamily. And we are also planning on on continuing that interactive workshop throughout the design process as it changes with the community and neighbors. So if anybody on council is interested in attending future sessions, I'm more than happy to send you the invitation. And transitioning over to the EPA grant and our ask for the council at this point is an opportunity for funding was presented to us through the Environmental Protection Agency to partner with a local jurisdiction to apply for off-off-site infrastructure improvements in order to improve the occupancy of an area that would be in support of affordable housing. So it's a win-win situation for us and the city for us. And we get the heated infrastructure that we need out in the area and for the city. We're improving Outlook Road in in order to promote the occupancy of the area, which is pretty barren at the moment. There isn't any sidewalks. It's it's fairly underdeveloped. And given the future plans of industrial development down the road, we believe that this is a good opportunity for you to have housing close to the workforce. That the way that the application works is there isn't a financial requirement from the city. Instead, you're the lead agency as we apply. We pay for all of the fees, all of the studies associated with the application. And this city is just the signatory that's required by the EPA. Brian, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, just a little bit. You know, part of our approach with a development this large, because this really would be our most significant development to date. I mean, fifty-seven acres is a is a big area. We've in the past, we've built maybe twelve or thirteen acres over three phases. We did that in in Prosser. And we've done that in Mapton over the years. And it just takes a long And it just takes a long time because these developments are funded through local, state, and federal affordable housing programs. So these aren't programs that are funded by the Catholic Church. There's not, you know, members of the church or there's no requirement, religious requirement to live there in the multifamily side. And so for this, one of the biggest challenges is working and navigating the requirements of the different funding sources. And part of our strategy with this EPA grant is to be able to put in all of the infrastructure at one time, rather than to do it in multiple phases, which will provide a significant cost savings and greater efficiency by doing it. It's one mobilization with your contractor and to be able to put in all of the curb gutter sidewalk and sewer that would service the whole site as well as be able to provide the walkable neighborhoods that Sergio mentioned along Outlook Road. And so again, so we would be partnering with the city. And that's really what our ask is tonight is to be able to explore a much more meaningful, like, where are those walkways going to go? How far down are they going to extend? You know, getting into the surveying and engineering side of it, that really does take a lot of time and coordination. And so we're hoping for a commitment from the city to be able to partner on this and then continue working towards that. And this is a different grant for us. We normally don't seek funding from the EPA. But this is a really good fit with this funding source. And and we think that the city of Sunnyside is well positioned to be successful. And so that's that's really our ask for you. And also wanted to have a chance to just open it up to any any questions.
House members, any questions for Mr. Ketchum? Or Mr. Deputy Mayor?
How you say you've never done these type of grants before with the EPA, but has the city ever worked with an outside organization with with grants? I don't know, buddy.
The city has worked with outside organizations for grants. I don't know if we specifically worked with the EPA. I don't know, Raul, you might have.
I didn't know as far as that goes either. I don't know if we've done that in the past.
Okay, and unless anybody has any other question?
Just share, you know, we've a number of different occasions. We partnered with the city on different cities on like community development block grant applications where often we'll be the lead author of those applications, but the city is formally the sponsor. So we do have experience with those types of partnerships. The CDBGs, the acronym, comes through HUD, Department of HUD. In this instance, these grant funds come through the EPA. But but they're really focused on creating, you know, sustainable, walkable neighborhoods. Part of our proposal is to be able to provide a community building that's typically with our funding sources on the multifamily side, we do a community building for a fifty-unit development. And that community building has to be sized only to serve the residents of that community. And with this development, we're looking at four or five phases of multifamily housing. And so rather than have four or five community buildings that are only limited to that development, we're seeking this source that would allow us to do one large community building and be able to provide services to both the homeowners as well as the residents at the multifamily. So that is a core component to to this particular grant. And it would also allow us to create more efficiencies by creating a community park that would then be open and accessible rather than have amenities at each one of those developments. We can scale them up so that that it's more serving of the broader neighborhood. And that's what our really goal here is, is to develop an entire community in in this place.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Beeler?
Mine's more directed towards Mr. Sanchez. I know the water and the sewer will have to go down Schoon Road or them Outlook Road. Are we going to have to expand that? Or is there enough water going down Schoon and down Outlook and sewer to take on a project like this? Or do we have to beat that up?
It depends which way, yeah, when when we get closer to the project, which way they're projecting to want to go. There is sewer south of Outlook and there is sewer on Schoon. So yes, it just depends when when the time comes, which way would make more sense to to take the sewer out. There is a lift station, a brand-new lift station there off of YVH next to the Wheat's project property that takes the sewer up to Outlook.
Okay, further questions, Mr. Govan? You had your hand up?
Yeah, so I went online on the EPA website for the the grant application. It looks pretty intense. Has have you guys already started filling that out? And there's, yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff with the community involvement, a lot of, you know, a lot of the feedback, like you said, you know, you guys had those events. What is the timetable on this? Because I also understand that once, if it is awarded, you guys have three years to complete, to use that money?
Yeah, so in terms of the application, the developer who's specifically assigned to the application wasn't able to make it out here. But I do know that the majority of it has been drafted in in regards of the three-year construction timeline that just pertains to one phase. So our initial phase will be roughly fifty to sixty units of multifamily development that will be sufficient for that EPA requirement.
Right. And also just to add that the the three years just to build out the infrastructure side. So it's not tied to the phasing of the multifamily. So so our proposal would include putting the the water sewer as roads, you know, streetlights. All of those pieces would be done within that three-year period. And then we'd be continuing to seek funding for a variety of funding sites. The multifamily is funded completely separately than the single family. And so there's lots of different layers of funding that go into the actual home construction side.
Okay. Further questions? So I have a couple. First of all, you made it sound as if the city has no financial obligation or commitment in this process at all.
Right, it's partnering on the grant application, but it's not a, there's not a match requirement to these funds.
So is the city obligated in any way, say you were to default on somehow or on the on the grant or something? Is the city then obligated in some way to cover the gap? Or is it just, we signed just to say that we're involved in the process or that we like the process?
Maybe he's signing to say you're involved in supportive of the process. The, as we get into the grant details, again, we would be sitting down with the city to map out, like, what are those? You know, what are the legal requirements and getting into that? And part of that is also through the contracting process. And so, which we're just not there yet, but we hope to be. But we'll have a chance to make sure that, you know, the the city's protected and that we have a good strategy, you know, and backup plan. And and part of the application itself is it does contemplate that. Do you have a backup plan in in case of default? Whether it's like, whether it's by us or by the city, like, no longer being, you know, interested in in that particular development. So.
Okay, so I have seen some of your other developments. I've kind of been watching the one on Allen Road going up. You know, it's it's required some work from the city and infrastructure as far as lift stations and and sewer upgrades and that sort of stuff. And that's benefited other neighborhoods as well. But this certainly was one of the impetus to to get moving on that a little bit, I think, if I remember right, Raul. That and the fact that some of those lift stations really needed to be upgraded. But I've seen some of your work and you guys really maintain your properties well. You've got some pretty good infrastructure as far as keeping things up and maintaining how the look of it is. I remember some of the early discussion when you guys were talking about putting in some of the apartment units on the north side of town. And you guys have really exceeded expectations. And I think that's that's admirable, so.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
I have a question.
Ms. Frauston?
For the record, can you explain a little bit about the fees or the cost, depending if it's a multifamily home or a single-family home? I don't know if you touched on that or what the threshold is. Seems like these are affordable rental apartments, affordable homes. What's the threshold? For qualifying the amount of income that these families are going to have to be making?
Sure, that's a great question. It's a complicated one because it all ties to the different funding sources that we would if we were successful with. So each phase of multifamily development will have somewhere between three and seven different funding sources. And we have to kind of weave all of the matrix funding requirements. But generally speaking, it serves households that are at or below eighty percent of the area median income. And so the rents on the multifamily side are targeted to specific income levels within that. So you might have like ten percent of the units targeted to households that have that earn thirty percent of area median income. And then you may have fifty percent of the units targeting to households that are at fifty percent of the area median income. And then maybe the balance is at sixty percent. So there's kind of different income targeting that we select through that process. But if you're at or below those targeted income levels, then your rents are tied to thirty percent of your monthly income. So it's targeted to be affordable at whichever income levels that you're you're at. So hopefully that helps address it on the multifamily side. The financing that we use typically does not have ongoing subsidy, meaning that the rents that the tenants pay are supporting the operations. And so most of the subsidy for those developments comes in in the form of investment on the construction side. So there aren't a lot of loans that have to be repaid. And so that we can operate those then based on the the lower income, lower rents that we're receiving.
Good, thank you. Ms. Sanchez?
Yeah, so under the multifamily units with Resident Services, you have five boxes that you guys will be providing for these families?
Oh, yeah, those are just kind of five broad areas of focus.
Okay, and then I did see, do you guys have some today here in Sunnyside? Are these services offered for them as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Further questions?
Mayor, if I may, I had one question. Sergio and Brian, thanks for being here. And it's great to see Sergio. I've worked with him for several years now, so it just does a great job. When we were talking with Camille Sergio that day, she expressed that there's some sense of urgency here, like in terms of decision, because you have to get that app. And relatively soon, did I misjudge that? I just want to make sure that.
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't have the exact timeline in front of me just because I haven't been as as divulged into it, but it's about like three to four weeks from now. And that's from, that's including the approval, so that's that's the hard deadline.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, further questions, comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So are we taking it for a vote today or does it require a vote?
That's a good question. I was, you were reading my mind, Deputy Mayor, because I was just about to ask Sergio and Brian, what what does a yes from us look like? Do you need a consensus? Do you need a motion? Is it part of the contract offline?
Yeah, go ahead. So the contract wouldn't be drafted until a successful award. So I believe it's just authority for the city manager to sign off on the application.
Yeah, so so at the at the time of application, there is there'd be an agreement between the city and and Catholic Charities Housing Services that outlines just the very kind of broad agreement relationship that we're working together to achieve these goals, that that the city's supportive of it. And so so that's a component of the application. And then if we're successful, then we'll go into, you know, contracting through the EPA. And then we get into, you know, more of the federal contracting that provides a lot more specificity. So it's the contract at this end is a little bit more like a letter of intent. I would say it's slightly more than that, but but we have a draft that we've been working with our legal counsel on that we provide. It's it's not a long document, pretty straightforward.
Thank you. It sounds to me like something we're going to want to vote on and have an official document from council that we voted on and approved it. So I don't know what what is the consensus from council? You want to move forward with this?
I mean, I think it's a great idea. We need the housing. We definitely need the opportunities for the residents. And I I have to go back to the application. I thought I did see something where there has to be an agreement, I guess, from the the city and and them. Maybe take a look at that and see if we do need to have some sort of agreement.
But I could propose, so we could provide a draft agreement for the city to take a look at. And then it and maybe that then becomes an item at the next city council meeting to if.
And that's what I was going to propose. You could get something to us and we could get that ready for our next regular council meeting in September. We will probably be able to put that on the agenda to vote on.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good, I think. And that way you have a better idea of what's in that agreement.
If you're able to get that into the city manager next week, that would be brilliant so that we can have it ready to go on the agenda. We can all read it over.
We can do that. You bet.
Sounds like council is not opposed to your ideas, so.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. We're grateful for this opportunity to present with you and and we look forward to working together on this.
All right, thank you very much.
And Mayor, I'll make sure that Ben reviews, just so we're not obligated in anything. We we trust him, but verify, but yeah, we'll we'll definitely look at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda for the study session is Item B, Workers' Rights and Fair Labor Practices Proclamation. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Frausto for reworking the resolution that she had at our last regular meeting. And I've read it over and it looks pretty good. I'm hoping everybody on council has had the opportunity to read the proclamation. Is there any discussion on the proclamation?
I also want to thank Ms. Frausto for taking the time. I know you were pretty passionate to have it the other way, but I think I think this is better than than nothing, I guess, at this point. Thank you.
Okay, so no further discussion?
I just want to, I just hope that we're making it completely clear that when we're talking about, because it's so close to Labor Day and all labor in our country is is very much the cornerstone of how we get food from the fields to our plates in our homes. So whether they're nurses, firemen, police officers, teachers, all of those folks. And certainly, our migrant, our not migrant, but our egg workers are very, very important to us. So as long as we're clear that this is all workers.
I think that has been.
With the proclamation?
Fairly fairly clear in the proclamation as I read over it. So I didn't see any thing that concerns me. And again, I I also echo the sentiment. I really like the idea of honoring all workers, whether you work in landscaping, agriculture, or, as you said, nursing and fire. Lending us your labor and your time definitely improves everybody's lives. And you deserve recognition for that, so. All right, then we'll bring that forward on the regular agenda. That's all I have for our study session. So if there's no further business to come before us, then we can be adjourned until six thirty PM.